Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Please make sure your cell phones are muted. And if you wish to speak to us on any matter that's on the agenda, you'll need to fill out one of the cards that's at the back table, please. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor.
Our eternal Father in heaven, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to come together in this town council meeting. We are grateful for this beautiful community which we live in. We're thankful for the moisture we've received this winter. We are grateful for this country that we live in, for the freedoms which we enjoy. We're mindful of those men and women who serve in our own forces, who protect those freedoms. As well, we are mindful of our law enforcement and fire first responders here in our own community. And we pray that thou would bless and protect all of them, bless their families. We are also grateful for the dedicated employees who serve this community and ask thee to bless them. Now, as we continue with this meeting, we pray that thy Spirit will be here with us, that as we look at the items on the agenda, that we will be mindful of what effect it may have on our community and look how we might serve the citizens here in this community. These blessings we ask for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item B on the agenda is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up and called to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter, reschedule for further consideration, or later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public and individuals are limited to three minutes. I don't see any requests to speak tonight, so we'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. I'm sorry, did you wish to address this and call to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it's the annexation.
Okay, all right, I'll get you later. Thank you, Tony. Item C is the consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be acted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the items from the consent agenda, and items are considered in their normal sequence as listed unless called out of sequence. Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
My second.
Thank you. We have been moved in second and all in favor. Please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We'll move on then to item D, which is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item, after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item, either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1, Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of National Arbor Day 2023. Counselor Craigbaum, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation from the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Mayor Stephanie Irwin, for Arbor Day 2023. Whereas trees are one of the primary quality of life factors that a town government can provide for its citizens, and whereas trees will continue to provide the community with colors, flowers, and beautiful landscapes that can be enjoyed by all citizens, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 38th year, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. And now therefore, I, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28, 2023 Arbor Day 2023 in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our town's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness whereof, whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at the Town Hall of Pine Top Lakeside this 20th day of April 2023. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Craigbaum. Item D2 on the agenda is recognition of Pine Top Lakeside Police Officers Mike Abuseho and Randall Keith for the exceptional service to their department, the town, and the citizens of Pine Top Lakeside. Commander?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I appreciate the time this evening to recognize a few of our employees. Like you said, it was an exceptional service to the citizens in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. And a lot of the time, officers are humble and feel like the things that they do are just part of their job, and they don't even bring it to our attention. So in this particular incidents, incident, it was called to our attention by Pine Top Fire Chief Richie Holcomb, and he notified dispatch supervisor Maria Garvin, Gavin, I'm sorry, of an incident that occurred in the morning of March 13th of this year. A call came out at 5:00 a.m. It was a medical call, and although medical is not our primary, we don't normally respond, or we do respond, but it's not our primary mission to respond to medical calls. We do go because a lot of times the officers are out in the field and they can be the first ones there. And that's what happened in this incident. Officer Mike Abuseho was the first one on scene, and it was this 66-year-old male that had collapsed at his home. He was unconscious and not breathing. Officer Abuseho immediately started CPR, and Officer Randall Keith also responded to the scene, and he was the second one on scene. When Officer Keith arrived on scene, he took over CPR from Officer Abuseho, because Officer Abuseho had been doing it for a little while and was getting tired, and medical was just arriving on scene. So we're doing CPR, whether it's 30 seconds or a minute or two. For the people doing it at the time, it can seem like, you know, hours, and it seems like a long time. So they were commended by the fire captain for performing that, performing CPR until medical got there. So medical took over at that point, and the subject was transferred to the hospital. But Officer Abuseho and Officer Keith are being recognized for their efforts, in a lifesaving effort to save the 66-year-old male. The second part of tonight is for Officer Abuseho. Just a few days later, on March 16th, he was leaving work, so not all things happen while we're on duty. But he got a phone call from one of his neighbors, and they had been victims of being held hostage by one of their family members at their home. It was an ongoing, rapidly evolving situation where it's in Navajo County, so Navajo County was responding. But Officer Abuseho got the call on the phone and was compelled, or, you know, it's his life profession to respond and do something about it. So he actually ended up getting on the phone with the suspect. The two victims that were hostage had gotten out of the residence. That's how they called Officer Abuseho. But Mike Abuseho had stayed on the phone for approximately two hours, talking to the subject who was suicidal and threatening to everything from suicide by cop to hurting anybody that came to help him or came to his residence. So Mike was commended by the deputies that were on scene. They were calling out SRT, which is a special response team. They basically had to barricade the subject, and bad things can happen at that point. But Officer Abuseho was able to talk this suspect into giving up his gun. Later that night, he was apprehended and nobody was hurt, so he was commended for that also. I'd like to bring both officers up here now. We have a certificate appreciation to give to them.
Thank you, Commander Wilkie. And gentlemen, we are very proud to have you part of our team here in Pine Top Lakeside, and it's really our honor to have you serve with us. So thank you for all your continuing efforts, and thank you to all of our officers for continuing. Anybody else have anything to say? Keep up the good work. Item D3 is a public hearing, discussion, legal action, and Consider Resolution Number 23-1668, rescinding Resolution Number 22-1634 that approved a major amendment to the land use element of the 2015 general plan. Jeremiah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have for your consideration of resolution, rescinding the Resolution 22-1634, which was the land use element, major amendment that we worked on last year. We are requesting that council consider this so we can move forward with a more cohesive general plan in 2025. We would be looking at not just the land use element, but all of the elements in the general plan. There's a, now technically, there's only two required in the land use, the land use element and the circulation element. But in the 2015 element, we actually included eight different elements, so we'd like to look at those elements again in a broader aspect instead of just primarily focused on the land use element. This will give the citizens an opportunity to weigh in and vote, as requested by the group that filed the referendum. So we will be able to, either way, it was going to happen with the timeframe. We were pushing close to, I believe, August or November. Is that correct, Kristy? For the, if we were going to do an election, however, that would have cost the town and the town taxpayers 20,000. So we feel that this is more an expeditious and overall better methodology if we proceed with rescinding the resolution. And it will give us an opportunity to refocus on all the elements combined in the general plan.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any, I'd entertain a motion. Vice Mayor.
I move, I move to approve Resolution Number 23-1668, rescinding Resolution 22-1634, which approved a major plan amendment to the 2015 general plan, land use element, to allow the town to formulate a complete general plan that will go before the voters in 2025.
My second, I motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah. Item D4, a public hearing to hear public comments regarding the annexation of Moonridge Estates subdivision. Jeremiah.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we were approached by the HLA of Moonridge Estates. I started having dialogue with them in January, and I, and I believe that Mayor Irwin had conversation prior to that. But the conversation entailed, what would it take to annex Moonridge Estates? Looking on the map, it meets all statutory requirements for length widths. It is adjacent on two sides, the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. It is up on Pinot Ridge, back by Springer Mountain. And they, they use our streets to access their subdivision. It is a private neighborhood. And so they've asked us to look at annexing that neighborhood. Tonight is the public hearing to hear public comments from, from members of the public on the annexation. And what that, so what the process kind of looks like is, tonight, there will be no action on the item, but it will give a venue for either people that are for or against it, or may have questions in regards to the annexation. And then there's a, there's a specific timeframe that's involved with the annexation process that we have to follow, got it by state statute, where we have to hold this public hearing within 20 to 30 days after the county's been notified. And then the window, in that 20 to 30 days, we hold a public hearing, and then when the 30 days expires, that's a waiting period for the blank annexation petition. Then the people requesting the annexation can move forward with collecting the signatures after the 30-day waiting periods expire.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Any questions for Jeremiah? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I do have a request for Mr. Bruce Taylor to speak. If you'd come up to the podium, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, I've talked to Mr. Lloyd about this a couple of weeks ago. I've been on the board of the Property Owners Association since it was turned over to us from the developer quite a few years ago. My concern is with the, if the town takes over the annexes, they own the streets and are responsible for repairs and maintenance, and that's what I'm basically concerned about. The developer, when the, when it was put in, said the streets would last 100 years. Well, that hasn't turned out to be the case. What happened was that the streets were put in with a gravel base before they were paved. The sewer operation came in, dug up parts of the streets, and did a poor job, did not replace the gravel that was there. As a result, five and a half years ago, we, the association, is a property owners' association, not homeowners, same thing, I guess. Five and a half years ago, the Property Owners Association spent over $50,000 repairing those areas where the gravel was not placed on top of, where they dug up for the sewer lines. As of today, those areas are in great shape. Parts of these, other parts of the street are not. There are some small areas have developed, which, where the pavement came loose, and they appear to be sinking a little bit. We, a year or two ago, we got asphalt repair material from Lowe's, put that there. That's starting to come out. So there may be a problem with the base underneath the asphalt there in several smaller areas. It's two streets, Little Bear Loop and Big Bear Circle. The, the problem with not putting a good gravel base on top of where they dug out for the sewer lines is that it's expansive clay in the area. That gets wet, expands, contracts, and the asphalt eventually it's broken up and falls apart. It has to do with drainage also. The lower parts of the streets are the ones that had the problems. The upper portion of Little Bear Loop is in great shape from original, originally put in. The lower portion of Little Bear Loop has a strip where we, the 50,000 plus that we did repair, is in great shape. As you go down Big Bear Circle to the lower parts, there are several strips where we put the money in to have the, over the sewer lines, have it replaced, and they're, they're in good shape. But a few spots here and there on that section started to develop where they sink, a little bit of sinking, and the asphalt coming apart. I can say we did some temporary repairs, which really only held about a year or so. They probably need some work underneath.
Okay, so are you asking us then what would happen if you're annexed into the town with those streets? Is that kind of your question?
Just concerned about town keeping, repairing, and/or maintaining those.
So I, I would invite our Public Works Director to come up and address that, if that's okay with you. My understanding is those streets would be put into our routine maintenance of all the rest of our roads, and he would analyze them. But if we could let Matt address that, if that's all right, come on up, Matt. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and the citizens from up in this area. You know, I've, I've gone up there and I've looked at the situation, and I do believe that we'll have some maintenance issues that we'll have to deal with. And I do, do agree that the citizens up there have made an effort to try to hold together the issues. As we're all aware, in this area, we deal with clay everywhere, right? And we have the same problems on our own existing roads, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think it'll be an issue. The hard part here with this annexation is, is we all know, this small piece of the annexation really does not bring the state funding or her funding needed to, to be able to repair them in a way that we could, right? But at the end of the day, we're a community as one, and as one, we're better as a bigger group. And I do believe that we can make a difference here and try to correct some of the past histories here. So currently, we would add them to our five-year plan. They would get in in the rotation. There are some maintenance issues there where we're going to have to take a couple of sections out to repair. However, we'll put them on the list, obviously below some of the other citizens that have been waiting for some time to get their roads fixed as well. So once we get those roads fixed, we'll move over there. So I don't have a timeline on when we'd get to fixing that, but we would add them immediately to our five-year plan, and we'd add them to our snow plowing routes. The drainage, we'd also look at. I didn't see any significant issues with the drainage. It looked like the plan was well. I think it's just the clay that they're having issues with up there. So I believe overall, it would be the right move to, to take on their roads and help them out.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Beat all the town standards too, by the way, with their stuff, so.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Anybody else from the public like to address us? If I can get you to fill one of these out. You can fill out it afterwards. You can come on up if you just fill it out so we have it for our records. Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Marcy Chambers. I'm one of the homeowners, and I actually have a question for my neighbor, who's in the middle of building a home. Their permit is from the county. Should the annexation proceed, they will then be within the city limits. What is going to happen to their building permit, and who's going to do the inspections?
Jeremiah, would you address that, please? Thank you.
So I, I guess the question is, you already have, your neighbor has an existing building permit?
Yes.
We could request it from the county and pick it up.
Are there different requirements?
I believe they're under the same building code as us.
Okay.
If not, they're one very similar. So it'd be very similar, except the process would involve calling us, the mainline extension, what is it, McKenzie Zero?
They can figure that out.
Yeah, it's easy. And then, you know, and for moving forward, for anybody in subdivision, they would come to the Town of Pine Top Lakeside for a building permit, as opposed to having to go to Sholo or Holbrook.
They don't need to apply for a new permit?
No, we would, I think we could, we could honor the existing permit. We would just, you know, get the information from the county. I don't think that would be too much of an issue, really.
It's only my home.
Yeah, we gave them, we gave them access just today to a bunch of different of our permits that they wanted to look at for the assessors. So I really don't see it as an issue. We could work through it.
Convey that information. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk about this this evening?
I had one question about snow removal.
Come on up, sir. We need to make sure we can hear you well.
Yeah, of course, I've been paying for our own snow removal. And the last big snow we had, I noticed that another Bluegrass Ranch got plowed because a bus route is there, school bus. But the side streets, which would have included us if we'd been there, didn't get plowed for probably half a day or more.
Well, there are certain routes that are priority, again.
Until, because of the bus, school bus road.
Well, that matters.
We have a resident in our development who drives a school bus. Does that count?
Matt?
So do you want me to address them, or do you address you guys? I'll try to do both.
You can do both.
So snowplow routes. So currently, our snowplow plan is, is that we, we sit down with the, the police department and the fire department and the bus farm, and that's what determines priority routes. Depending on where the fire department or police department need to get, we focus on those. But we run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Anytime a snowstorm is happening, we're out. Typically, the secondaries are usually about a half a day out, and usually we, your type of road would be about the secondary. So it'd be about a half day out before we got to you.
The fact that we have a bus driver, doesn't count?
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't help you out in this situation. However, what I would, you know, let you know is that our fire departments up here in this area, they run with a snowplow. So if there's ever a medical issue or anything like that, they bring a snowplow in front of us. So if we're not there, they will pick up the pieces. That's why we focus on a route, getting them into the area, and then they can get the last legs of that if they need. Did that answer your guys' question?
I think so, and. And keep in mind, if there's a really big snowstorm, chances are, school will be at least delayed, if not canceled. So that might be a different, you know, change there, so. Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have a question. This is for Matt. Did I hear you say that their, their road is to our specs?
Yeah, so it was obviously built about 20 years ago, I think, is what we've determined. But they built it to the town standard, and, and that's where I, you know, I could never say that we shouldn't adopt it and bring it into category one because they did do what we've asked in the prior. And I think we ran into the same thing with our roads aging quicker than they should.
Thank you.
Councilor Brimhall, did you?
You have a question? And this is, I mean, for Jeremiah or somebody else. What, what's the reason that this community wants to be annexed? Do we, like, know their background, like, why they're coming forward to do so?
I can partially answer that question. I don't know if there is a representative from the public that would like to answer that. But from my dialogue with the Property Owners Association, they want to be able to have a say in issues that affect them here locally. They live in the town and, not necessarily in the incorporated area, but they would want to vote in our elections and be provided the services that we provide our other citizens. Although they are participate, they are, they do utilize some of them services, and I had this conversation with
Dan.
Dan. Yeah, some of the members of that neighborhood, that subdivision. And so the, the ask is mutual, really, you know? They're, they're already utilizing our services. And so we give some, we take some, and then we'd be able to offer them services that they don't have. And hopefully, you know, and PD can chime in if they're here, I don't know. Yeah, they, you guys probably already respond to this subdivision anyway. But, yeah, so. But the aspect of, you know, being able to get a building permit here locally instead of having to go to Sholo is, is a win for them. The aspect of being able to vote for you guys, who represents the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, is another win for them. So I think that there's a lot for them to gain from this. And I, and I'd like to see it go forward. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but, yeah. Does anybody else have anything to say in that regard? No? Okay.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Councilor Craigbaum?
I was wondering, I think this is a really excellent situation because we have thought about annexing parts of the county that seem, you know, are right in contiguous with the town, and having people who want to be part of the town, I think, is wonderful. It seems like we can really benefit them, especially if we did chip seal on that road. I, I drove up there. It seemed pretty close to being good. But I, I know there are some problems that have people concerned. But I think it's a good opportunity for all of us to think about annexation, too. And what is it to benefit the town? It's going to cost us to work on their roads instead of having the county do that. But I spoke with Kevin, and could you share the, the funding that they would be bringing to us as a town in addition to the fact, I mean, it's going to cost us to take care of their roads and provide the police protection and things that we do for other citizens. But there are benefits, I think, to the town, too.
There are benefits. But this is a relatively small area, so I would not, without knowing the number of full-time residents, I don't know how much state shared revenue this one area would bring. But it's part of the, an area that, in the future, that we have talked about annexation, which is a lot greater area. So this specific subdivision may not bring us a lot of revenue. But it's a step in the right direction for, for bigger plans that we have.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Schnitzer?
There we go. I just want to say something you may know or you may not. I always like to say it. You're, you've, you've always paid your fair share of what's been asked of you in terms of taxes. And, but, but the tax system is set up so there is no property tax for the town. And so bringing in your, your property to the town, it will cost the town money because the two things the town provides are police and roads. And we have cooperative agreements with the county. We probably are already responding to calls in your area. And so, so having you be part of the town is not an incremental cost for already incurring that. But everybody's always under the impression, I pay all these taxes, so, you know, that'll go to the town, and it won't. So that's why it's not, it's not as easy to say, oh, yeah, let's go do this. But I think they did a good job of saying there's all kinds of other reasons to want, to have you as part of the town and to give you a voice in the town you live in. And so just be aware that it, it takes a little contemplation on our part because we're figuring out, honestly, how are we going to pay for you? Because that's the situation we're in. Certainly not of your doing. It's not of your doing at all. But, but it's, it's just something we have to consider.
Thank you, Councilor Schnitzer. Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the neighbors? Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'm assuming that Jeremiah will assist guiding you through the process of becoming part of our community. We would welcome that. So if there's been no further business tonight, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.